The time is 7:01. I call the April 24th meeting of the Village of Suffering Planning Board to Order. Please rise for the Plen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, for good reason and justice for all. First up on the agenda is Elsabor D. Guatemala's sign application. Please state your name and address for the record.
Luis Alarcon, address, Montebello, Lafayette.
We have your signed application. We also have a comment from the building inspector. Was there any comments you wanted to make about it, Rob?
Yeah, just it may, I think the sign is 30 inches, which is actually six inches wider, sorry, longer than permitted, but the board can adjust that regulation if it decides.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on that? Is everybody okay with the six inches or want them to amend it?
Is there an existing sign there that he's matching or is it completely new?
It's a new sign.
Did you mail it to the picture?
The picture looks appropriate.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's off by a few inches.
It's appropriate.
We can approve it unless anybody has any issues with it.
These are type-two actions in the secret, so no further reviews required on that.
We have a motion to approve the sign application as it stands.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Halper, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, we have...
Can you just remind him he has to get the permit from the building department?
Yeah, you do have to get the permit from the building department.
I think when I submitted the application, I submitted it with all the documents, but I can't say...
There's a letter in that package that said after you get your approval, you have to go to the building and I give you a permit to hang the sign.
Yeah.
Okay?
One follow-up. Thank you.
All right, and up next is IV2 Rockland Logistics LLC. Please name your state, your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, good evening. Christopher Feldman, Harris Beach P L L C, on behalf of the applicant IV2 Rockland Logistics LLC.
You have no Darius tonight?
Uh, Darius had another meeting, so...
Where did you say you're from?
Harris Beach P L L C. I'll tell Darius that he was missed out.
Absolutely. Make sure we get our Charlie Brown tree that we asked for.
No, there's nothing for him to go.
So we've got, I guess, the site plan approval.
Right.
We've already gone through SECR and the site plan approval and everything else. I'm assuming you've reviewed this?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, again, not the decision.
Another decision.
So the board previously granted site plan approval to this. This is just a written decision and everybody on the board's been provided with a copy. So if anybody, if everybody's okay with it, it's appropriate to make a motion to adopt that decision.
I made a few comments about traffic turning out right onto Route 59 and about screening from the library. I don't see that incorporated here in this document. Is that somewhere I'm just missing it?
Uh, it may be contained within Nelson Pope's comments.
Are these, are those incorporated by reference?
Yes.
To this document?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anybody know that they were incorporated?
I thought they were.
I believe they were, but I'm not, I didn't...
Bonnie responded to you specifically that she had your notes of evidence coming back in an email.
And then she said that she didn't incorporate them. And then she asked me to send another email to be incorporated into the planning board approval.
Well, here's the library right here. Gassimon is standing at the Suffering Free Library. They're providing a landscape plan of a hard and fast-growing species. All of them. I'm pretty sure that that right turn business was incorporated way back from the very beginning.
Yeah, but this isn't what I've asked for. They're saying they're going to put on the library's property off-site. And I don't think that's what, that's not what, this is specifically not what we talked about.
On which one?
Uh, the planting, so we...
No, but I mean, did you look at the plan, the most recent plan?
Is that included here?
No, that's not, it's too big, no.
Okay. Does the applicant know if those comments were incorporated? Uh, I believe all comments were incorporated, but, you know, specifically, I'm not sure. I think you're talking about plantings... Planting onsite blocked the view of Building 3 from the public library and signage and flyers to restrict turning right onto Route 59 through the village.
Uh, I can, yeah, I mean, I don't know if those specifics were in there, so if you don't want to vote to adopt it tonight, you don't have to vote to adopt it tonight, but I, I'm not sure if you were there when this was granted the approval.
He wasn't.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't be here, so Bonnie suggested I put my concerns in an email, which was distributed to the board.
Well, I guess the question is for the board, do you want to add those in? Those, what are they, what are you asking for?
The two major points were large evergreen trees to screen Building 3 from the Suffering Free Library and signage and flyers to, well, it was, it was in the email I sent, basically signage and flyers to prevent right turns by trucks onto Route 59.
Is that probably on the site plan? Or is it on the site plan?
Uh, I don't know if it's on the site plan and I don't know if, you know, the state DOT, you know, because there may be other trucks, I guess, that could seek to make a right there. I don't know if that was looked at by either DOT or...
There was similar language about, is it Montebello Road or added to the previous comments? It was, what's the one to the west? Done by the middle school.
Mayor?
Montebello.
Montebello.
Well, I guess the question is what does the board want to do? Do you want to add, I guess, with respect to the first one?
Bonnie's stuff is right here.
Okay. Do you know if those items were in there?
Uh, I'm not, sorry.
Okay. So again, I'm asking the board if it wants to add something about large evergreen screening and the no right turn by trucks onto Route 59. Yeah, my only concern with adding that without getting something further from the planner is whether or not, you know, because there's other trucks that would turn right there. This isn't saying don't turn right out of the subject site.
Yeah. And there's school buses that turn right as well, so we would need to...
Right, so I think that might...
I think it's really about heavy trucks going through Suffering to access the British There was some language that Bonnie had that I copied into my email. Here, I can look it up, I guess.
Because of DOT, you may not have been able to put...
Well, again, there's requirements that...
But you can apply DOT for...
I don't know that DOT is preventing that, trucks making a right turn. I think, I think the discussion was that the trucks would likely not want to go that way because it's easier to make the left.
No, but if there's, you can get onto 87 through, through Hillburn if there's a blockage or something.
But you'd have to go through the village, which, which would be several stoplights for them as opposed to just...
And also incredibly unsafe for a big truck to go through the village.
No, no, that's true, but I guess the point being, the discussion was why would they go right instead of left when it's longer?
If it were the only way, I guess, is what I'm thinking, because if there's a blockage at the arm ramp over by, let me see, so my email was following Bonnie's recommendation, I'm putting my concerns in writing, and if necessary, made a condition of site plan approval pending agreement by the full board. Evergreen tree screening, I'm concerned that the tops of buildings in the development will be visible from the Suffering Free Library. I would like tall evergreen trees to be a part of the site plan so that views from the library are preserved. Looking at the site section and landscape plan, these trees will have to be a tall, dense variety to accomplish this. Signage, I would like the language similar to what Bonnie added to the Montebello Road adopted for Route 59 near McDonald's. I'm concerned that trucks will make a right turn on Route 59 to be forced to go through the village to get it to Interstate 87 ramps near Hillburn. I don't feel the village roads are large enough and having wide trucks moving along them would be a safety concern in my opinion. Below is a draft text for consideration. Signage, appropriate signage will be incorporated into the site plan, which shows onsite and if necessary, off-site signs, which prevent trucks from turning onto Route 59 towards the village or Suffering. Likewise, trucks should not pass through the village to get to the logistics center. Other measures, including handouts at Sarah, will be distributed to trucks for, to accomplish this goal. That's really just a paraphrase of her text for Montebello Road.
Does the board want to add one or both of those? I just ask everyone.
How does everybody feel about that?
Do we want to do each and...
As a condition? What, are we saying that would be a condition of approval or...
Well, the trees, I thought was addressed on page 11.
It looks like they're saying they're putting trees on the Suffering Library site, which the backyard there is so miniscule, I think that would be a problem to put large trees there. I think that has to be trees onsite. I think if you change the word offsite to onsite, that would be adequate. But it doesn't say that.
Yeah, well, that was Bonnie's language, so...
I just have a curiosity, do we have the right to tell trucks they can't turn on to...
Well, that's kind of my concern. I don't, I don't know that I would put that in tonight if you want to adjourn it.
I think you could apply to the Department of Transportation for, I think there's an application process.
Well, I'm not sure any, I mean, there are 18-wheelers and there were dump trucks going through the village today.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the signage would say. I just feel like 18-wheelers is not safe. And this would, there were hundreds of trips a day. I think that is a real safety concern, so I think it has to be addressed.
If you can override the state of you.
You can make an application to the Department of Transportation asking for a sign.
Should we exclude all trucks on Route 59 who are going to the village?
No, it's a good question. I think it's maybe, we'd have to understand what the signage would say, but I think it's...
It's a state highway. I don't know that we can necessarily...
I was gonna say, I don't think you can restrict the... The village is a state highway.
59 is, no, it's a state highway.
For Lafayette?
Yep. For 59.
But the transportation engineer said it's not suitable for heavy truck traffic at one of the earlier meetings. It's not set up for heavy, like it can't take the loads.
What can we do, Rob, as far as that's concerned?
Yeah, I'm reluctant to put that in without further, honestly, without something further, you know, and it's up to the board. I mean, it's one person, so I don't know, you have four people who are in favor of that or...
I mean, we've never wanted the trucks to go through the village from day one, but I do think it's a state thing and we do know that they are actively working with the state because there were requirements that they can't meet because they don't own the property. You know, as far as, you know, turns and things like that, and I think we did put in language about best efforts for their, for their deal with the state.
...state DOT and a candid rock for the influence to those ways of impacting the project.
Right. Well, again, it depends on what everybody wants to do. If you want to adjourn it to address that, we can. If you want to proceed, I mean, the first thing is with respect to the evergreens, again, without, you know, speaking with Bonnie, I don't know that I would make those two changes, you know, with respect to the evergreens even, because I'm not sure whether they could be done onsite or offsite, you know. I haven't, I didn't look at the most recent site plan, so I'm not sure.
Mr. McInerney, what are your thoughts?
I feel we should postpone it.
Mr. Van Sickle, you're an alternate, what are your thoughts?
I think we have to postpone.
If you want to just give me, if I could just have a minute to make a call?
Sure.
Because my client, I mean, you know, this is already approved at the last meeting, so, you know, this was just an adoption of the language of what was already approved by the board. So I'm a little caught off-guard by the fact that, you know, after it's already been approved, we're being told that now, you know, there are all these contemplated changes, you know, so without having my client, you know, I'd really like to make a quick call. I think we're just asking to verify that the comments from last meeting were incorporated. Well, I mean, you know, the comments might have been there. I'm not 100% sure, but I do know that this board did approve it already, you know, so, you know, this is the formalization of the previous approval that's been granted and, you know, we've been on this project for a while.
Can we approve anything else?
No, this is to adopt the decision, so there's not, it's, it was granted site plan approval, subject to conditions. It's just a matter of the logistics of what's in the approval.
Let us call the next person, loosen up, and we'll come back to our suggestions. Next on the agenda is 8th, 717 Lafayette Avenue. Gdansky, please state your name and address for the record.
Paul Gdansky, 3512 Whittier Court, Maual, New Jersey. This application was before the board previously, referred to the zoning board of appeals. In March, we received the variances. The only thing they had asked us to do was remove one of the parking spaces, which we did, so now we're back before this board to get, hopefully gain final approval.
Sure. Anybody have any comments, concerns?
Is there anything from the building department on this?
No, this has been before.
Okay, all right. Did, I mean, are you looking for overrides on county planning? There were some...
I think we wrote a response to the planning some time ago. They, they thought it was, the building was part of the application, it's just the parking lot.
Right, but, I mean, you wrote a response, but...
Yes.
Some of them probably need override.
That's correct. And I wrote the reason why.
Yeah, so we'll go, we can go through them if the board's inclined to approve it.
Go through each one.
Uh, yeah, sure, so...
Reduced by one space.
Well, if you're right.
Anybody have any comments before we go through each one?
This is the one that was associated with the car, the car dealership.
No.
No. It's a different one.
This is in Condon, Lafayette Avenue, the former Providence Bank Building.
Oh, I know, I know which one it is.
Yeah, they're removing the kiosk because it's not a bank anymore and they want to make the parking lot a better configuration.
I got it. I know this one. Thank you.
Anybody else have comments or want to make any comments on?
Do you need the family's going in?
All right, so the one, a couple that he addressed for override would be the first one, which addresses the bulk standards and that the board needs to be satisfied with the cumulative and regional impacts of permitting development that exceeds bulk standards. This did go to the ZBA for variance, so, you know, the board did, the ZBA did approve the variances, but again, it would probably be appropriate to override that one just to make sure it doesn't hold up their permitting. If the board considered it, we're just gonna write these down.
Yeah, a good number of the comments don't apply.
Right. Number two, they request an opportunity to review site plan required for the conversion of the former bank. Again, that's, there is no site plan on that. That had already been approved. It's a separate piece of property, so again, that can be deemed satisfied, but I think it's safer to override it so we don't run into any issues. Number five, it's about the off-street parking and the absentee application for conversion of the bank space. Again, this is all about the bank, which is a separate property, so I would recommend overriding number five since it's a separate property, it's for use for the bank and visitors. And then, number 20, about the designated street line. That Paul points out that the, it's a variable width and due to location adjacent structures, you know, any takings or whatever would be, would just not be possible. So the bulk table and DSL are accurate on the plan according to Paul, but again, I think it's appropriate to override that one for the reasons that, you know, Paul set forth there. So those would be the four, and we could vote on those, you know, together based on those, that reasoning.
Any comments? Try to do each one separately.
Uh, no, we'll do, I think if you, if you, if there's nothing further, right, you want to ask if anyone from the public wants to speak on this.
Anybody from the public want to speak on this application?
Close the public hearing.
All right, close, the motion to close the public hearing. Make that motion. Mr. Halper, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And the board previously declared its intention to serve as lead agency on this, so it would be appropriate this time to consider a motion to issue a negative declaration under SECR.
Do I have a motion to issue a negative declaration under SECR?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Halper, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then a motion to grant site plan approval.
Do we have a motion to grant site plan approval?
Just the motion first.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Halper?
And then before you go, that, so then a motion to enter, or I guess, take the second.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Van Sickle, second.
And then, so that would be a motion override numbers 1, 2, 5, and 20 of county planning.
And do we have a motion override numbers 1, 2, 5, and 20 from county planning?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Halper, do I have a second?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, so then all in favor of the site, motion to approve site.
Motion to approve the site plan approval?
No, all in favor.
All, I'm sorry, all in favor, who approved the site plan approval?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, back for, you want to come back up for IV2?
So I was able, again, Chris Feldman, Harris Beach P L L C, on behalf of the applicant. I was able to confirm the evergreen trees are not an issue and we have no problem applying to DOT because we need DOT to have no right turn off of Hemian Road onto Route 59. For truck traffic only? Yeah.
Okay, to apply to DOT for that.
We'll apply, we have, only DOT can do that. You're making other improvements to the road. We'll apply to DOT, whether DOT grants it or not is up to DOT.
Yeah, previously, the agreement was, you know, it's a best efforts thing because the applicant doesn't own 59 and the properties adjacent to it, so it's, it's a good faith effort and thus far, this applicant has been very responsive to, to concerns expressed by community members and neighboring communities, so I feel pretty confident that they're gonna do the right thing.
So my suggestion would be to add to number seven under attachment A, including no right turn sign at Route 59 for trucks if permitted by...
DOT.
New York State DOT.
And as far as the trees, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, it's already, already in there. Can we just think, can we just amend?
Right, so we just change that to on.
Onsite.
Correct.
Screening trees? That would be good.
Okay, so would those changes, if you want to approve?
13?
Yeah.
Yeah, 13 on page 11. All right, so...
I just want to try and screen, sorry, sorry. Sure. I'm on the wrong page. What is it saying? Sorry, it's bumbling. Can we say the tops of buildings 1, 2, and 3? Because it's really only the tops. I just amended to say the tops of Building 12, or the full height of Buildings 1, 2, and 3.
What's that?
Under...
Yeah, I don't, right.
Reduce the visibility and impact of Buildings, of the full height of Buildings 1, 2, and 3.
I don't think you can plant a tree that's that height at the time.
I think they're, oh, no, no, at their full growth, not, not day one, no, not day one. They're Charlie Brown trees, day one, they're tiny trees.
Yeah, the Charlie Brown tree isn't going there.
What's that?
Charlie Brown tree's not going there. Yeah, it's fast-growing evergreen species that...
Or can we say tall, fast-growing evergreen species or something? It's the top of the buildings that's really the concern from the library and surrounding buildings.
Do you know what it would look like?
If the board wants to add it, add it.
Do you want to add the word tall?
I don't know that it has, it's really a way to enforce it, frankly. I mean, you can't really, right, it says fast-growing evergreen species. I think that, I think that addresses it.
If I could control how fast the trees grew, I would be in another line of business.
I hear you. Are, are you good, Mr.?
I'm good, sorry, guys, sorry for the...
Do we want a motion to adopt?
Yeah.
What's the site plan?
The site plan approval decision.
Do we have a motion to adopt the site plan decision, approval decision?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. McInerney, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Sickle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your patience. Up next, we have 14 Wayne Avenue.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. When you talk to Darius, remind him of the Charlie Brown tree that we discussed. Thank you.
I am Emmanuel, Emmanuel, L P C, New City. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I have with me Paul Gdansky, who is the project engineer along with the applicant and the applicant's contractor. This is a, an application for an automobile repair shop at 14 Wayne Avenue. The adjoining property, 16 Wayne Avenue, already has an automobile repair shop, body shop, that is owned by a separate corporation controlled by Darrell Green. So 14 Wayne, 16 Wayne are in two different ownerships, but they are both controlled by Mr. Green. Mr. Green would like to use 14 Wayne for, as an additional garage space and repair space for his business. There is currently an existing house. The house is a non-conforming use in the GB zoning district. The change that we're proposing will bring it into conformity with the zoning district. It may be easier if we had Paul just walk through the plans so that he can show you what we're doing and then we can talk about how we're going to hopefully get from here to there.
So basically, we're proposing to remove all the structures that are currently on site. We're gonna construct a long-story garage with parking that's located inside the building three days. the building, three bays. Additionally, there'll be availability of some parking outside, but it would conform, you'd be able to park like a tower if you needed to. We also propose a dumpster location in the back right. Also, there is, also, there's a slight reduction in the coverage from the previous site that was there, the site work that was there. I also showed part of the site plan of the adjacent sites, and you can see what's going on next door as well. It's basically it in a nutshell. We also, I'm sorry, we also propose to plant things and lighting as well, lighting on the building and planting in front of the screen.
I'm sorry, you may have said this, is it operating in conjunction with 16?
It will operate, it will operate in conjunction with 16. There will be cross easements back and forth to allow that to occur, and those cross easements will be, will be tied to any approval that we do get, if we get approval. We're aware of that, but they want to keep it separate for financing reasons, which is not unusual. While the code works for a lot of this, there are problems with respect to the way that the code treats the storage of vehicles at an automobile repair shop. It talks about parking space and the number of parking spaces and the size of parking spaces, and that doesn't necessarily go with the reality of how these facilities work. We'll have a further discussion about that. We did receive Ms. Franzen's memo a little less than three hours ago. We haven't had a time to really go through it. I will tell you that on my first reading, it appears that there is some misunderstanding on her part with respect to what this proposal is. And again, if I had gotten it with a little more time before now, I would have given her a call and tried to straighten things out, but we are here, and we would like to move the process along. One of the things that she does talk about, she points out that there are additional variances that may be needed. We had initially thought that this would be a type 2 action under SECR based upon what she has advised us on variances, additional variances. She may, I think she's right with respect to it being an unlisted action, so we will get a short EAF into you. If it, you haven't put one in yet. Have you? Did we put in a short EAF?
I don't recall seeing one, but I'd ask you to put one in, because you had addressed it as a type 2 or initial...
I think what happened was that we prepared it and didn't submit it because we felt that it was a type 1, type 2, rather. We'll submit it, we'll submit a short EAF as would be required for an unlisted action. We'll also, as I said, speak with Ms. Franzen, clean up some of the things that she's asked to be cleaned up, re-submit, but we do appreciate the opportunity to be here and get this process started. We've had some back and forth, as the board knows. We did go to the Village Board, the Village Board, because we needed a special permit, the Village Board did refer us back to this board, so all of that is also in process. Among the things that we had done previously was that we had advised both this board and, of course, the Village Board as to how we felt that we complied with the special permit requirements, and so that's in your package as part of a supplemental narrative that we had submitted. So that's the purpose of our being here this evening, to finally get this thing out of just a pile of papers and in front of you.
Right, and just to delve a little further into what Mr. Emanuel's saying, it's before the Village Board right now for consideration of the special permit. As part of their review of the special permit, they referred it to this board for its review on the special permit issues. This is not here at this moment for site plan approval. So once, my understanding, speaking with Mr. Emanuel and Mr. Gudansky, is they're going to address Bonnie's memo, make some changes, make the additional submission, and then come back. At that time, the board can make whatever recommendations it has with respect to the special permit. It will then go to the ZBA to address the variances. If the variances are granted, it will then go back to the Village Board for the issuance of the special permit and then come back here for site plan approval.
Yeah, we're, we're familiar with that up-down, back and around that's needed. However, what you didn't mention, Rob, and what I would like to make sure we're straight on is, hopefully, this board will be the lead agency for secret purposes, because if I don't get an egg deck out of this board under a coordinated review, and it should be coordinated, I'm not going to be able to get anything from anybody.
Yeah, yes, the Village Board did specifically request that this board serve as lead agency, so this board will do that.
Any comments? Concerns?
So just to be clear, you're gonna take a house and use it as a garage? Is that the thing?
No, no, the house is coming down.
Okay, and you're gonna build a new structure?
A new structure of about a little over 1,200 square feet, one story. Okay, and that's, by the way, is why we felt that it was going to be a type 2 action is because it was well under the 4,000 square foot threshold. We were not aware of the other variances that would be needed, and those would kick it into unlisted action territory. But it is, we are taking down the existing house, putting up a new 1,200 square foot garage with three bays.
Three bays, correct. Two, 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 two collision.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Right. This is 202 collision, that's your business?
Yes.
Okay. This memo has, you should read this memo, oh, you should read this memo, it has a lot of, it's a laundry list of concerns.
I think you just got it.
You just got it, okay.
We got it, what time is it? We got it about three and a half hours ago.
You haven't read the whole thing yet?
I did read it, and as I said in my opening remarks, I think that there are some misunderstandings...
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure there are.
From Ms. Franzen, you know, that happens. I'm not aware that there's a CDRC type of committee here in the village. Had there been one, we would have addressed it at that point. There isn't. We deal with what we have to, okay? I'll contact her, we'll straighten out whatever misunderstand, hopefully straighten out whatever misunderstandings there are. I have a very good relationship with Bonnie, I've known her for longer than she would care to admit.
So what are you looking for tonight from the board?
Tonight, in terms of action from this board, nothing.
Nothing.
Well, they can't because we don't even have any EAF.
We can take care of that next time.
Unless you want, do you want, do you want to...
Yeah, we were just discussing it.
You might as well declare your intent.
We can declare intention service lead agency.
Once you get it, commit...
Get that to us as soon as possible so that it can be distributed.
Okay, fine, that would be great.
Any questions about the project, or anything?
Clear.
I'll take a motion to declare your intention to serve as lead agency.
Do I have a motion to declare our intention to serve as the lead agency under SECR?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Sandbridge, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's second?
McInerney.
McInerney. Good night, everybody. And next on the agenda, we have Suffolk House Service and Sales, 20 Wayne Avenue and 23 Wayne Avenue.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Richard Ellsworth of the applicant. I did receive a notice this afternoon of being on the agenda, did not have any indication of that prior to today. Mr. Magrino, I apologize, I wasn't aware if this was ever put over from November to this date, but I don't think it was. In any event, my client's strictly observant, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to him, and I have not thoroughly reviewed the building inspector's opinion, so as I requested by email, would like this to be put over to a date to allow me to do that.
Okay, we'll put it over to next month, does that work?
That would be fine.
What's the date?
The date would be...
The May 22nd?
If you're keeping a...
Is it the 4th?
Should be the 3rd one.
Third one is the 15th, right? The third one's the 15th.
Third?
Fifty.
Yeah, we changed it this month to the 4th, but yeah, it's generally the 3rd.
Be the 15th?
Did you want to do the 4th one, or which date?
No, we want to do the 3rd, the 3rd...
Is the agenda crowded that night?
I'm sorry?
I have court at 4:30. I just want to make sure I can get here at that.
Yeah, it would be, well, we'll put you at the end of the agenda if you want. Would that work?
That would work.
Like, we start at 7 o'clock?
Sure.
That could be 7:15 depending on the agenda, though.
I get it.
What time do you usually get done with court?
Usually plenty of time, but I don't want to, I don't want to assume that.
Next month, because you're not here yet.
So the 15th at 7 o'clock, and I'll be here by then.
And then, yeah, we'll put you at the end of the agenda, just to...
That's fine, I just want to make sure we're, okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, number six, do we have any old business to discuss? Do we have any new business to discuss? Do we have any miscellaneous things to discuss? All right, and do we have a motion to schedule the May 2024 meeting for May 15th at 7:00 PM?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Sandbridge, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. McInerney, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Halper, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Stand, second, Mr. Sandridge, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned.